HR did not approve your data. Did you approve the security door policies? You will be pulling that.
Okay. We'll just pull it or we'll...
Oh, I mean...
We won't even do this.
Because they didn't actually approve that.
And we have some free...
Not at the end of the meeting, not in the beginning.
So we don't have anyone for the beginning?
No, because it's not related to agenda items.
What? Are you serious?
Mm-hmm. They were all related to the chief one, related to the drop box, which is not on the address.
All right.
Yeah.
I don't have any light here.
I know, it's so... I think we turned it all lights on in the back.
Okay, okay, let's get going. Okay, are we set? Good in the back? All right, we're good in the back. Good evening, everybody. It is 6:35, Common Council of the City of Wausau, September 24th, 2024 City Hall, and it is again 6:35. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
We have 11 voting members present.
No proclamations tonight, and we are at public comment for pre-registered citizens on matters appearing on the agenda and other public comment.
You do?
None? Okay. Up next is the consent agenda. Would entertain a motion. Motion from Watson, second from Henke. Comments? Questions? Seeing none?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All right, up next, 240902, mayor's appointments. I will be pulling this tonight if it's just the one I'm thinking of. Okay, we'll pull that one for the next meeting. Next is... Is the item 240912.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, your point of order.
The Marathon County ordinance or the Marathon County Charter indicated that it was going to be, from their point of view, it was going to be 100 days to report back. I know that they are seeking volunteers from their side. I was just wondering if this is going to affect then the timeline that Marathon County, because it is a joint. I was just wondering if this is just a point of inquiry with regard to how this is, the timeline with regard to the city versus the county's timeline with 100 days, because they want to report back. They're looking forward to a, in the county, a resolution, looking forward to 100 days to report back with regards to the study as to, to the whole study and recommendations. Just curious.
It definitely could affect, depending on when the county will vote on this, that, but I believe they did approve the formation of the unit.
Right, they have voted, and it is so, just curious about how the city was approaching that, that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
There is a motion to amend. Did you mean to amend? Okay.
Alder Rasmus.
Thank you. If both appointees are willing to serve, what are we waiting for? Just curious. I mean, I hate to hold up Marathon County.
Standby. Let me just confer with the city attorney. Okay, I'm reconsidering the appointments, and two weeks is not going to upset the 100 days, so we will get those as soon as we can. Thank you. Okay, up next, item, our file 240912. It's a Parks Resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement to provide park services for city of Wausau parks, and that passed four to one at the Parks Committee. Would entertain a motion, a motion from Neal, second by Larson. Mr. Neal.
Thank you. I'll just state that, you know, this has gone through a variety of discussions, back and forth, and even some changes of mind along the way. But I do believe, and we pretty much all agree that, well, four to one, as you saw there from Parks Committee, that we have a workable relationship, and to depart from it has a million question marks, so we're comfortable staying with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larson.
Thank you. I'll echo Alder Neal's, even though I believe I was the one that voted against it, but because of the fact that we are having some issues with the committee standings and such, and I believe that, you know, that these issues are going to be worked out in the future, if they haven't been already, and I agree with Alder Neal, I think that we should stick with this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Gisselman.
Yes, thank you. Just a question, I don't know if Jamie or, with regard to moving, you know, once is it agreed upon, how are new policies with regard to coming off of the Park Committee as well as the city council with regard to new park issues? Is that something that is a part or would be incorporated? Or is it pretty much a standalone? You know, for instance, trees. How would issues with regard to trees be, would that be a part of this? Or just sort of an understanding with regard to operations?
Yeah, this intergovernmental agreement doesn't change anything that we've done up to this point, and we'll continue with those services. So we manage the city trees through our urban forestry program as well as coming to the Parks Committee. They decided at the last meeting that that will remain a standing committee for now. We're going to work on kind of the overall structure and the communication between that and the Park Commission, and on the county side, what we do with that. So we won't change anything than we've done in the past. This agreement just kind of puts everything that we've been doing for the last 50 years into one document and kind of lays out more specifics on how we operate and what you can expect. And it's up to the committee and the city council, if there's anything in that agreement to change, we'll look at it and review it every year and can make adjustments, especially to the attachment, that's kind of our day-to-day operations. And policies and everything will continue to be, operate through the city council as they have been.
Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none?
You may begin, you may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All right, the other, the next items up will be requiring the suspension of the rules, so we'll be voting on suspending Rule 6B filing and 12, for filing purposes, and 12A, referral of resolutions requires a two-thirds vote. Motion by Watson, second by Neal.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
So up next was a pending from Finance, and that did come through Finances, item 161110, Resolution authorizing Wausau Police Department to accept a Victims of Crime Act. That's the Volca grant of $134,7,000 per year for three years to continue the ongoing work of the Victim Resource Unit, VRU, and related budget modifications, and that did pass five to zero. And I have a motion from, we have a motion from Henke, second by McElany. Comments, questions? Seeing none?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
Up next, item 23-1109X, another resolution from Finance tonight. Resolution approving University of Wisconsin-Madison Service Agreement and Related Budget Modification. I have a motion from Lucan, second by Henke. Comments, questions on that? That's the one that changed.
Right, because remember you negotiated...
Right, right, we did change some. So I don't know if it's technically a budget modification, because the recommendation is going to be to approve, at least my recommendation is approve, the $25,000 that was budgeted last year for 2024, and then look at, considering the balance for next year. So we wouldn't have to have a budget mod tonight. And that did pass five to zero. Alder, and everybody did, we got this in the mail just in the last couple of days, the annual report from university that outlines this. Did everybody get a copy of that? Okay. Alder Henke.
Yeah, thanks. I'd just like to, we amended it from the $55,000 to $31,000 based on recommendations.
Thank you. That was easy. Anything else? Seeing none?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to one.
Okay. Another item from Finance tonight is 240915, Resolution proceeding with airport terminal renovations construction project as temporarily city-only funded project administered by the Wisconsin Bureau of Aeronautics with approximately 95% of the project cost to be ultimately reimbursed with FAA funding contingent on assurance from BOA, and FAA reimbursement will occur at a cost of $1.4 million. And I heard Mr. Martins earlier run those acronyms. Hopefully I got them correct. I've got motion by Larson, second by Henke, Mr. Martins.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor. And you're the pilot, so you should know these acronyms. I think, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what this is, because this is a lot of, there's a lot of words here in this, in this resolution, but I don't see John Shamile in the... Oh, he is back there. He did a really good job of kind of outlining this. This is something that typically happens with the FAA in that the money is coming, but it doesn't, their funding, their funding schedule doesn't meet our project schedule for the airport renovation, so we need this resolution to reimburse their, so that we make the initial payments, and then the FAA reimburses us for the costs of the renovation of the municipal airport. I just remember this is a project that is 95% funded by the FAA and only 5% funded by the city, so it's a really good deal for us. And I don't know, John, if you've got anything else to add on that?
Chances are, the bills won't be coming in to the city prior to the funding being provided by the FAA, so we'll probably never even have to write a check. In the past, that's how it's worked. And by the way, we have had to do this on past FAA projects, and we've never had a problem with being reimbursed when we've agreed to do it.
Thank you, John. Anything else? Seeing none?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
Up next, item, file number 240916, Resolution from HR, Resolution approving the amendment to leave donation policy, and that also passed tonight at the special HR meeting, five to zero. Have a motion from Lucan, second by Neal. Seeing no discussion?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
Up next is the security door policy, and that was referred back to staff, so I don't think we're going to run that tonight. Pulling it, we're pulling that, it's going back to staff.
No.
Okay, before we go into closed session, which could be a period of time, we've got four pre-registered citizens to speak, so we'll move the public comment and suggestions up, and it looks like they're all on the same item. I have not discussed this with the clerk yet, so take this for what it's worth, what's been put out there in the media, you know, has not, has not really fully been run its course. So let's start out with, are these in the right order? Oh, reverse. All right, first up, we have Sarah Marie Brock.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. So when the story of the mayor removing the approved ballot box appeared on social media today, I went through the normal critical thought process. Is this fake news, rumor, clickbait? But over the course of the day, it became clear that this was the truth. The elected mayor chose to deliberately and obviously, with photo op included, relocate the ballot box. I did a little research. I learned that as of July 5th, 2024, the Wisconsin Supreme Court held that secure drop boxes are permitted under state law, a decision that is binding on all lower courts. I learned that the decision to utilize ballot boxes is at the discretion of the municipal clerk, and that drop boxes are set up, maintained, secured, and emptied by municipal clerk and their authorized representatives. These drop boxes may be placed in a location other than the municipal clerk's office, and may be placed in any location that the clerk, within his or her statutory discretion, designates. I also learned that in Wisconsin, municipal clerks have broad statutory discretion to administer elections in their jurisdiction, including whether or not to use drop boxes, and that the election committee stated that clerks should be aware that choosing not to use drop boxes because of a belief that they are not legal is likely inconsistent with the reasoning of the decision and raises the risk of a legal challenge. I would assume this is also relevant to mayors. I have faith that the city council, and if necessary, the Wisconsin Election Commission and law enforcement will do their job and determine why the ballot box was moved, and if any laws were broken in doing so. I am not a legal scholar, and I do not have the expertise or claim the expertise to offer an opinion in this area. The questions that I would ask the council to consider, seeking answer for, are twofold. First, why have we, the public, not heard from our city clerk? As of my writing of this, there has been no public statement, nothing on the city's social media pages, nor, from what I can tell, has she had the opportunity to respond to any of the requests for comment from the media. In July, when the decision was made to remove the drop boxes, she and the mayor both made statements to the media. If the mayor claims, as the mayor claims, there were issues that Clerk Bernard was aware of, why have these issues not been shared, and why would she not be a visible part of the decision to remove the box? Second, this act was done in a way that deliberately avoided transparency with our community. It would have been extremely easy to offer up a press release prior to the removal of the drop box, or to request a discussion item tonight to offer respectful and timely notice to the city council and the wider community. Instead, it is obvious that the decision was made to ensure maximum outrage, confusion, and frustration. And my question is why? What are the goals and whose interests are being prioritized? Voting is how we, the citizens, use our voice, and choosing to make that process harder is purposefully silencing our voice. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Right, up next would be Christine Martins.
Good evening. My name is Christine Martins, 1228 Arthur Street in Wausau. I did not prepare anything for today, so this will be very short and sweet and to the point for once. So you're in luck. I also saw this come about, that the ballot box had been moved. I strongly protest this. It is of utmost importance that all legal voters are able to cast their ballot. This is how our democracy works. And any person standing in that way should be, should not be doing that. I ask that, why is any elected official moving anything having to do with the election? No elected official of any sort should be touching that ballot box, as far as my understanding of the law is. Like I said, this is short and sweet. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. And up next is Nancy Stensel.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. No matter where we work or what part of the state we call home, working Wisconsinites should be able to vote easily and safely, and making it harder to vote is out of touch with Wisconsin's values. Drop boxes have been used in Wisconsin for years. The people of Wisconsin deserve the opportunity to participate in our democracy by utilizing drop boxes with their absentee ballot. I just feel that this is... I just feel that this is, is further undermining election integrity. And while we had a former mayor who promoted accessible voting, we have this one who would rather try to swipe a ballot box on a Sunday after church. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Bannister.
Hi. Thank you for listening to my, my address. I'm speaking to you today as a lifelong resident of a city I love. Both my husband and I read the Wausau Pilot and Review article, and we became livid. Mayor Denny's actions of removing the voting drop box from the front of the city hall is an action well outside the scope of his role. He needs to make a public apology and immediately restore that box to its rightful place. Legal action could be taken. Mayor Denny has no more right to relocate that box than I do, and he knows it. This is the kind of action that's designed to stir the pot. It does not tamp down the rhetoric that we're all, we're all facing in this election cycle. It accomplishes nothing positive and amounts to, in my estimation, voting interference and intimidation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And, you know, in defense of the clerk here, I'm sure, I have a few credits short with law degree myself, as most of you are. So my staff work has not, we haven't discussed some of these issues. The, the report went out from an alder, from a sitting alder, that put, put a mischaracterization out there, and that has caused despair.
Do we respond to public comments, city attorney? Point of order.
Point taken.
Generally, we don't. Thank you.
There were mischaracterizations that needed to be addressed. Okay. Thank you for your comments. Up next, we're, we're going to be going into closed session, and I would look for someone to read the closed session section. Actually, I would look for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Martins? And a second?
I make a motion, and we go into closed session pursuant to Section 19.8, 19.85, Paragraph 1, Sub G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved regarding Marathon County Case Number 24CV40, Green Acres at Greenwood Hills LLC versus City of Wausau, and Marathon County Case Number 23CV756, The Portage County Bank versus Bull Falls Properties LLC et al., regarding a stipulation.
And we have a second from Watson.
Yep, I'll do a roll call vote. So Lucans?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
McElany? Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Tierney?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Henke?
Aye.
We have 11, it passes 11 to zero.
Thank you, and we will reconvene to, to vote on action if, if necessary.